All right, let's call the meeting to order. First item of business is the minutes.
What?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Pat reminded me if you have a cellphone, please turn it off or turn it to vibrate. Next item of the business is the minute, or the claims.
Move on the claims. With the exception of...
Second?
There was one called earlier. I'm not sure Dennis isn't here. There was a water...
Purification.
...purifier in juvenile court. There were some questions as to...
Now, we never got an answer to that yet.
So that was on hold?
I think we pulled it.
Oh, okay. If you pull it, we'll get it straightened out.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I'm really unprepared for this last item, for this next item. Pass around the memorandum personnel transactions.
And move on it.
Second?
Discussion?
Mr. Chair. Is this just the three names on it, or is there more?
No, there's four.
We have three.
This was added on Monday. It's 24 hours. Let me pass.
Do you want to look at mine? Do you need a copy?
You can have it made now.
Oh, okay.
Let me introduce David Gleiser. Dave. It's been a zoo this morning and you didn't... You know, things should have been a lot smoother than this. David is our new economic development director. He's going to begin work the 6th of January, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
My name's David Gleiser. I'm a Sioux City native, graduate from North High School here in Sioux City. Attended undergraduate school at the University of South Dakota. Public relations and advertising was my major. And I received my master's of public administration degree from the University of Nebraska at Omaha. I've been working at Siouxland Human Investment Partnership as a project director for the last seven years, overseeing various program, policy, education projects. I have a sales background, marketing background with businesses in the area for over 10 years. And I'm really looking forward to applying to fields and environments such as this in Woodbury County. I think we have a tremendous amount of opportunity for developing rural Woodbury County. And I just really look forward to working with all the stakeholders in the area, local officials, and getting some things done.
David, welcome aboard. And the news media can catch you outside if they want.
Well, I too would like to welcome you. I think this is an excellent move. I think you're a very good choice for this position. You're quite enthusiastic, articulate. You already have some good ideas of what you want to do for our county. And I think this is a start of a very successful endeavor, and welcome.
Thank you, Jackie. And I feel really thrilled and really honored to be coming in on such a, you know, significant time with all the projects that we have going on. Feels like a really positive working atmosphere. And so I look forward to working with you folks and serving the rural areas as best as I can.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I think you're addressing the media with somewhat symbolic of the position since they were coming at you from all sides.
Right.
And you faced them head on, so that was good.
I don't like speaking to people with my back, so... But yeah, January 6th will be my first date and look forward to working with you folks in the near future.
And we already have an appointment in Mobile in February itself.
All right.
Thanks, David. Thanks, David. Is Glenn Sutty out there? Well, there he is.
I'm here today representing Starcom. Long Lines Communications has transferred ownership of their... Two of their locations for the Starcom System One at the West Tower, west of the West High, and the other one near Homer, Nebraska, on our Homer Tower site. They've sold their network to AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T wishes to extend or continue with the lease agreement that we have with Long Lines. So Starcom's making a recommendation that county supervisors authorize that transfer of lease to AT&amp;T to continue with the revenue stream that we need to continue to operate. The one here in Sioux City is a lease between the city of Sioux City, Woodbury County, and Starcom. So we'll be looking at, once it's approved here... If it's approved, we'll take it to city council next week for their approval and move forward.
You didn't raise the rent?
Uh, no. They're still under a current lease.
Move on A.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move on B.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Ivan Dressler. Mark Nara.
That was coming up just as a little bit of introduction. We've been working with INF's group out of Storm Lake with improvements to the Orton Slough. Karen's going to try and bring up an email here that will obviously put the attachments up on the screen. He does have copies of the handouts in addition to what I had emailed to you folks here if you want to have a hard copy of it. So I was kind of watching for the emails.
We've got that one.
Karen. What we were working with these folks on is back in 2011 and 2012, we had some early discussions with the landowners who own properties that are contained within the Orton Slough to improve drainage. We worked through some options with Ivan and his staff. The board supervisor serves as trustees for the Orton Slough. We've scheduled a public meeting that will be held with property owners down there on January 16th at 5:00 PM at the Salix Community Center. We start out today, though, to give the board a preview of what's going to be discussed there. This will be an informal public hearing on January 16th. Ivan can explain to you some of the procedures that go into a project of this nature. Slough the size of a board can't well be necessary for that. I'll turn it over to him and see if I can help Karen.
Thank you, Mark. Yes, I didn't realize. I brought over the paper copies. If we can refer to those maps as we proceed here. Just to give you a little background there, the Orton Slough, which the original facility of the Orton Slough is a tile outlet facility. There's about 2,300 acres in the Orton Slough Drainage District that drain through this outlet, which again is a 24-inch tile system. Back in 1986, the district did do an open ditch improvement for a small stretch leading from the top end of the district tile to County Road D-51. And there's a short stretch of open ditch there that was improved to deliver water to the outlet, again, the district tile. The district tile was originally shown on the original plans to have a 6/100 grade, but the survey work that was done by the county engineering staff has found that that tile system actually was installed on a 3/100, roughly a 3/100 grade, and that the existing capacity of this, for this 2,300 acres of drainage area, with a recommended drainage coefficient for good agricultural drainage would be around a half-inch drainage coefficient. The existing tile only has 1/10 of that capacity. So when they have large storm events out there, they do have water that has to stand for a significant period of time waiting for this tile system to catch up and to outlet this water. What we have in our preliminary studies and discussions with Mark and his staff is that we would be looking at potentially three different options. One option would be to maintain the existing 24-inch tile and add a relief tile system adjacent to it to provide this half-inch drainage coefficient capacity. And a drainage coefficient is a half an inch of water per acre for the watershed that drains off to it, drained off in a 24-hour period. So we're not talking storm sewer-type capacities here. Agricultural drainage is expected that the water is to stand on the surface for a period of time, but you hope to drain off within a 48-hour period so that you do not have damage to the crops. That parallel system, we also have handed out to you a cost estimate sheet that shows under option one that you would be looking at a 54-inch storm... Or 54-inch tile adjacent to the existing 24-inch tile. That's referred to as option one, and that the cost for that is estimated around $607,000. Then additionally, there would be some improved crossings underneath of county secondary roads and also the interstate. That would be costs that would be actually back to secondary roads and to the state of Iowa for those crossings, new crossings underneath of the roads. So that separate cost is non-district cost of around $156,000. The option two that we've looked at is a different route. On your map there, the second sheet should...
Karen.
If we... Holding adjacent here on the first sheet, you'll see a dark blue line, which would be an alternate route. And by using that alternate route, we would not be trying to save the 24-inch tile system. We'd be installing a whole new tile to replace the capacity, provide the full capacity. That only changes from a 54-inch up to a 60-inch tile. That increase in diameter makes significant changes in capacity. You know, so a 24 and a 54, you can provide that same capacity through a 60-inch. Okay? In doing this new route, we would be trying to avoid area that is known along the interstate to be potentially wanting to be developed. And right now, the existing tile system goes through, right through the area that is potentially looked to be upon for development. So the reroute would avoid that. And again, increasing that to a 60-inch tile, the cost under option two, you can see, goes up to $778,000 for that option. And then there would be some increase in length to the crossing involved under the interstate. And the total cost for crossings under the interstate and secondary roads would be around $199,000, basically $200,000 for that option. A third option that we looked at was following that same route where the new tile system would follow, but going to an open ditch. The nice thing about an open ditch is you do not have a lot of elevation availability for grade on this system. An open ditch has built-in storm capacity. You know, the tile is a closed conduit, only has so much capacity. Open ditch has freeboard in it, which would allow for larger storm events also to have some additional relief there. In addition, the construction for option three, if you look at the total estimate for that open ditch is at $432,000. Again, your crossings on that same would be culvert crossings under secondary roads in the county, and then under the interstate. And that would still be around a $200,000 for the culvert crossings that would be paid for by secondary roads in the state of Iowa, but you could...
Which color is that?
That would be following that same dark blue line.
Okay.
But instead of a tile, new tile system, you would basically be making an open ditch facility.
Be on the west side of Barnett Avenue. The road that goes to the new Fort Neil Wildings new facility. So it'd be on the west side of the road there.
That is correct. The... We have also included in that cost estimate of 432 is right-of-way acquisition. Your open ditch would be taking land totally from production. And we have estimated 10.7 acres taken out of production would not be usable, that the district be acquiring. And then there would be 4.6 acres adjacent on the west side that could still be farmable right-of-way, that the spoil would be leveled along there, but it would be leveled where you could maintain it. It would be stripped and topsoil and maintained for farmability. The landowner would be paid for an easement on that, but you would allow... They would still own it and still be able to raise crop on it. That cost, or the total cost for right-of-way is computed at about $93,000. So those costs are already included in that total cost estimate of 432. And then we threw in an option 3A. 3A is actually taken off... Mark, if you can point to that up above at the top end. We would extend up along the interstate, on the east side of the interstate. And showing that on your map here, we would be extending from the CRP wetland. We would be extending this blue line up along the interstate and then intercepting where the... Right now, right about that area is a culvert that comes through the interstate. And we would be picking that water directly up, right adjacent to the interstate right-of-way. And also, it would provide for Barker Avenue up north that the road ditches along Barker right now do serve for some drainage. But when they get to the end of the interstate there, that's just basically dumped to the surface and does not have a good channel for the release of that.
Is that a drainage district?
That is within the Orton Slough Drainage District.
Okay.
At this point in time, it is not an improved ditch for the district.
It's not a maintained facility by the district.
It's a private facility, more or less, where they just have a little bit of a sway.
So running it along the interstate would reduce the amount of acquisition of land?
Uh, no, we would actually... That would increase the amount of acquisition of right-of-way. We would stay outside of the DOT right-of-way in that open ditch. It would basically provide an improved outlet to pick up water from further north in the district. Instead of everything happening to channel down right now, down to the top end of the existing...
Can I help you out here?
Sure, go ahead.
Where it goes through the railroad structure along Old 75. Right now, all the water has to get all the way across 75, runs down parallel to 75, and then comes back through the railroad. And then there's a ditch that runs through the field over here. I think it's Brulette's Field. No, I'm not pronouncing that right. And it comes to that 36-inch stand pipe that sits here in the field. What this would do is, instead of waiting for that water to work its way east, it would improve the path for water coming under the interstate and down Barker Avenue. It would bring it through the field more directly to where the system would pick it up.
And this is the open ditch concept?
That'd be the open ditch concept, that's correct. The... Under the tile, the relief tile, we would still go to the top end of the... Where the existing outlet is right now. And we are inlet to the tile system. And even in the approved tile alignment, we would still go back to that same location under that option. So option 3A is just basically in extending the open ditch concept further up the system.
What's the estimate on the cost of 3A then?
3A there is showing that would increase... An additional $112,000 would be added to the cost. So that would bring your total cost of the open ditch with the extension to $544,000.
This is one of the things that came up in the public meeting that we had in Salix prior, was that the folks on the upper reaches and over here that are relying on water to get through the interstate are paying Orton Slough taxes, but they're really not being terribly well-served.
Benefited from it, yeah.
So that's one of the things that they took into account to try and improve things for the people that are in the upper reaches and on the western side of the Slough.
The other items I wanted to touch on is, under this... Any one of these options would be an improvement. Under the drainage code, basically an improvement, we have to consider wetland issues in the district. We would, after the informal hearing with the landowners, if there's support for one of these options, we would be informing the landowners that they are going to be asked to do, have wetland determinations completed on their properties. If we have issues there in getting landowners to sign up for the wetland determinations, we would be recommending probably moving forward with a evaluation, a third-party evaluation to determine if there is potential wetlands that would be affected by this project. And then we would coordinate that with the Natural Resource Conservation Service to get a scope-and-effect determination to see if we have any mitigation issues that we would have to deal with as part of this project. Our review of the watershed and where we would be basically doing the reroute or the relief lines, we do not think there would be any wetlands, potentially farmed wetlands in the watershed that would be directly impacted and have to be mitigated. But we wouldn't be able to verify that until we move forward with actual determinations through the landowners or doing a third-party determination on the watershed. Additionally, items that we want to touch on would be touched on at the hearing is we have lands at the north end of this district that basically, from our watershed review, appear to be draining to the district but are not inside the current assessed boundary of the district. They don't pay taxes for drainage, but their water physically drains this direction and have to utilize that outlet. So those lands down, or up here at the top end, and then we also have lands, additional lands down here at the lower end, that would be lands that actually utilize this outlet and do not pay assessments for it. And we would be recommending those lands to be annexed into the district. You would be looking at over 360 acres of land that would be annexed into the district. And that process is, in a sense, a forced issue. In other words, if it's found that they are physically benefiting from the facility, the board, as trustees for the district, have the authority to annex those lands. And the landowners have no remonstrance rights to basically object from that annexation. There would be a separate hearing process that you go through to do that all under the Iowa code as to how that's handled. We would have right-of-way acquisition that we touched on. If you basically, the open ditch facility was followed, there would also be reclassification of the district. You are going to have a different benefit to these landowners with this improved capacity that has to be considered. And a reclassification redistributes that benefit to the landowners in the district. How much do each individual landowners pay for this facility would be redone through that reclassification process. And again, that's... The board actually appoints three commissioners, of which one of them is an engineer, to do the reclassification. And then there is a commissioner's report filed and a separate hearing on that commissioner's report with the landowners in the district.
Who would be the other two people?
It would be landowners in the county that do not own land in this watershed. So we would have to work with the board and the auditor in regard to basically finding a couple landowners,
typically farmers. Right.
Outside that watershed.
Farmers in Garrettson District who've served on the board who are very familiar with this type of drainage assessment. This is one of the reasons we wanted to go out for outside help on this one, because this is... It's more complex than just throwing in a second line. And I think we've outlined for you today why this is a little more complex than the Hackley was, for instance, where we were just making ditch improvements. This one, where we're looking to address the issues of expanded capacity. There are quite a few options that he's been able to look over with you today. And there are issues with additional landowners that have benefited and reviewing on taxation as well. So there is some more complexity with this drainage district than we see with some of our other ones.
Option 3A, the open ditch from Barker Avenue, to Barker Avenue.
That's correct. That...
Do the other, do the tile lines, address this issue or not?
No. The tile system cost estimate that we have provided only extend to the existing top-end location that the current system extends to.
So there will be no benefit?
There would be improved capacity from the current inlet of that tile system. We would still have the improved capacity, but we wouldn't have the improved extension of that outlet farther up to Barker Avenue. Now, that would be something that could be looked upon. Or another combination of options would be is a separate open channel along, parallel to the interstate from Barker, down to the top end of the tile system and basically make a combination, an improved delivery ditch to an improved tile capacity.
What I had initially looked at was that we would consider... He's finding Barker again on the map here. What I had given consideration to was that we would install a stand pipe down here at the south end of Barker and then carry that over toward the wetland. Let me go to this map here.
Yeah, right there.
I had given some consideration to a stand pipe here with a smaller drain that would have cut through the field over here, allowing that to be tillable without permanent taking other than an easement. And then connecting in with that stand pipe. The open ditch is much less costly and still provides similar service.
But it does take away from productivity from the...
It would take some land out of production
Yes.
to provide that.
But, you know, there are gains for the property owners in having that plant better drained as well.
What's the longevity on an open ditch system like this? I mean, would it...
Well, maintenance-type things typically around a 30-year cycle for some sediment maintenance on the open ditch. Overall life of the open ditch system, you know, basically forever, as long as you're pulling your maintenance and removing sediment on a roughly a 30-year cycle.
The main farmer's ditch is 130 years old.
Is it? Yeah, okay, yeah. So all of this water ends up in Brown's Lake?
That is correct.
So will there still be a tube under D-51 to get over to that, I guess?
Yes, and under the interstate. That's the extra prices that he's talking about.
Right.
And those are required by code to be paid for by the highway authorities. So DOT would have to pay for the portion that's under Interstate 29. Woodbury County would have to pay for the portion that is under D-51. Woodbury County would have to pay for the portion that is under D-51. And that work would have to be done. One of the reasons it's got a little more costly is we're looking at not open cutting either of those facilities. We're looking at having to do a bore underneath the highway to install those culverts.
That is correct.
So, what are you looking for today?
Well, last, the second sheet attached to your cost estimate is a draft informal hearing notice. That, basically, what we would be asking the board today for is the actual approval to set the informal hearing for December 18th. Oh, excuse me.
January 16th.
January 16th, setting the informal hearing for January 16th at the Salix Community Center. And that, the board would need to officially set that informal hearing.
And at that hearing, what are you expecting to come from that hearing?
That's the opportunity to present all this information to the property owners and allow feedback.
Feedback, so that the board also knows what the interests in, of the landowners are. The board will, cannot take official action that day other to take the input and give direction as to which options we want to finish as, in a formal report that we would present at a formal hearing. And then, the board would basically be taking action to approve or basically deny the improvement. And so, that informal is an education process for the landowners to provide them the opportunity to hear these costs. It also provides that feedback to the board supervisors so that you have an understanding of what's being supported by the landowners. And at the formal hearing, the landowners, because it would be an improvement to the district, the landowners have remonstrance rights, where 50% of the landowners controlling 70% of the land can object to the improvement and stop the project. At the informal hearing, that is why we're going through the informal hearing process is to educate them so that, and so the board has a understanding of what is supported, what isn't supported. So, when we get to the formal hearing, hopefully, the issue of remonstrance is laid to the side so that we know that we're trying to, we got the support of the majority of the landowners in that watershed.
So, we need to set the hearing for January 17?
16.
Oh, 16th, I'm sorry.
At 5:00 PM.
At 5:00 PM, I would move it.
I'd second it.
What day is that?
That's a Thursday night.
Everybody gonna be able to make a 5:00 PM?
Yeah, I think so.
Go ahead.
I'm 75 today, and I've been on that lake for that outlet here since I'm five years old. I've grabbed this on. I've watched it all through the years, and I've faced with it, I've faced big kids. Took a lot of other people, kids my own age, with me on that lake forever. I've seen big rains, I've seen little rains. You did a good presentation, except we're not talking much about Brown's Lake. Now, you said that this new water district would run out nine times more water than what it does right now. You said that's only carrying one tenth of what the other one will carry. So, that means there's 90% more going in. And I don't disagree with that. But I've been, I'm in presently in a lot of rainy ditches from your side. I know how they work, I know how some people complain, they don't get the water in, the other one gets too much, and the taxation is right. I'm familiar with all of those arguments. But, I think Brown's Lake is a public lake. And Jack Virtue told me years ago, when they sampled the water coming out of this very cover, that sometimes it's not very good. And he said they'd never, as far as he knows, checked the mud in the bottom of the river. And I'm concerned about Brown's Lake because we own that lake, I know we just built a canter. And I think that's a public lake, a state lake. And I think the DNR, EPA, and all of them should be involved in this decision as much as I know you don't like to hear that. However, whenever you expedite water in a road ditch, you pick up a lot of sound and, and that isn't going to have any place to retard settling basins or anything like that. If you're going to do that, you should have settling basins to catch all of that sediment before it goes into the brother river. And that's my opinion. And I really think you should consult at least the DNR if you don't want to go to the EPA and then present it to this board. Thank you.
Would that be part of your presentation?
Yes, we will have further discussion on that issue at the informal hearing. And again, then following behind that would be an actual formal hearing. So, those items, we can address in more detail at that hearing.
Right. Because we didn't talk a lot about Brown's Lake, and I, I would agree with the gentleman out there.
Right.
And we've had discussions about it.
And, and exactly, right now, as an example, there is filtering to water coming into that outlet system through the current WRP, wetland development that exists at the very top end of that district tile system.
Forty acres here around that tile system does tend to pond the water prior to taking it in. I, I think we remember in the spring of 2014 where we had a little over 100 acres down here flooded. But, you know, that is one of the things with this system being lower capacity. There, there, there was over three weeks of water on the land before it was able to get to the, to the system. This new system would be more efficient. Same amount of water goes through, but your time of concentration on land is down.
And, and that, exactly, the delivery, when we talk about the increase, we're still not talking about a capacity design for peak storm event removals, where you're trying to remove it in a couple-hour period. You're allowing the water to temporary pond on the surface in the watershed and then draw off over a period of time. So, those issues, but I fully agree. Anything that can be done to improve the water quality before delivery into Brown's Lake, and we already have taken a look at a couple potentials there, and we would have to be working with a couple private landowners to actually try to improve that water quality.
Good, yeah.
And this does take more land out of service because if, when you're building detention, you do need a place to build that that would not likely be productive for agricultural purposes.
All right, we'll save all this for the hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mark, I did have a question. When you notify the landowners of the public meeting, is that via mail?
That will be by mail. And we'll also put it in a paper, it has to be posted in the same manner as the board supervisors meeting. It is the board supervi...
I just want to make sure they all know that we go beyond what we have to, to make sure everybody's...
We already have the mailing list ready to go. We are waiting for it's actually the date of the seventh hearing, and we've got everything ready to go in the mail here by the end of the week.
Okay, thanks.
Actually, we didn't dream this up. The landowners came to us asking for this.
That's, that's correct, yes. They, they did suffer in, in the spring of 2011. We had over 10 inches of rain on the watershed. And our early drainage models pretty well correlated with the, with what they experienced for the amount of time it took to drain that property and allow them to get the crops in.
It's been a problem down there for years. We'll see what they...
Yep.
I was stunned at that meeting when, you know, my initial estimate was over 600,000. As, as Mark remembers, he attended it as well. And they were willing.
Ready to go? It's been a problem down there for years, though. Yep.
Well, 1920s.
Flat, yeah.
1920s when they set it up, and it was much less system than they have today.
Absolutely.
And much less than what we're...
And there was more wet area, I mean, wetlands down there in the 1920s, too.
Yes.
We gotta move along?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item is the approval of a lifting of a tax suspension for AB.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a request for a tax suspension via the right of redemption.
Move it.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff.
We received information from Salix. They signed off on the 2080 agreement. I believe that's number eight for communities in Woodbury County. Some have a few left.
Have they been holding on to this? I see the data's...
Yes. We reminded them a couple times, I think they've been busy, so we just...
I'd move we approve the resolution for Salix.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Dave, have we been collecting any revenues on the other seven?
Not at this point, yet. We haven't had any dog-at-large things that have gone past an hour. We bill on the hour. And, you know, we haven't had anything. We've had some things that, Greg, you can come on up. Greg's been dealing with a lot of it. We've did some cleanups for the city of Odo, but those, we just gave them a notice. And the gentleman went out and cleaned up a problem that had been there for years. So, I think our thoughts have always been that our mere presence, maybe a knock on the door is maybe better than the city councilman or mayor, and so far, that's proven to be the, the best way to handle it, so it's been very good.
But it really hasn't required very much time at all?
No, we have been doing the directed patrol in the towns just as a visible presence since we left Climbing Hill. But as far as time spent on calls, I'd have to say very low.
Very low. The directed patrol is, we're spending more time in the towns, which we're seeing a decrease in the minor problems that go on in the towns because the duties are already there.
And I do kind of foresee down the road that they may want to maybe contract some things, hours and things, and that would benefit revenue coming in also. But for now, we just wanted to get this off with our six guys finally off of, of the field training program. We have more people out now.
That's gotta help.
Yeah, a whole bunch.
Okay, great, thanks, sir.
Thank you. I'm still trying to figure out how to use the word remonstrative.
What does it mean?
I know what it means. Better carry a Webster's with you. Next item is the approval of a resolution adopting and approving tax compliance procedures relating to conduit tax-exempt bonds.
Move it.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Butler, do you have anything to say here or not?
Oh, this is a problem. This is the last piece of the file part of this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Mr. McTaggart.
Dr. McTaggart.
Dr. McTaggart. Nah, he's retired.
I don't know if it's good to be called this way. I have with me the vice chair, Susan Barta, if you could.
I have copies of the report for everyone who'd like to have one.
The first part of the report is kind of how the commission was set up, who would belong to the commission, and make the time. And as we saw at that time, gathering information from various groups that serve juveniles and review programs that deal specifically with gang intervention. Since the inception, the board has been served with Monique Scarlett, Dr. Jerome Pearson, Susan Barta, myself, Mark Munson. And this year, we were fortunate to have Jackie Smith join us. And we're going to today ask the county supervisors board to consider appointing Perla Alcorn Florrie to replace Monique Scarlett, who has resigned and left the board. If you would consider doing that today or at a future date, we would appreciate that. We went through an interview process, had several very fine candidates, and Perla was the one that was selected to bring forward to the county board of supervisors. One of the things that we did is, is we, each of our meetings had groups present their positions, what they did for youth in our communities and our county. Several organizations, as you can see, listed there. We did make a recommendation to the county board of supervisors that of $23,000 that you allocate for the youth intervention services in the county be added to the Sanford Center outreach program. That was a very difficult decision for us to make. However, Sanford Center, based on requests, and we talk about data-driven leadership and data-driven decisions, the data they provided us was outstanding, accurate. And we felt that the $23,000 would be very adequately spent for the help of our, our youth. Extremely good program, as you well know. And the other programs are very well-done, too. But the challenges we face, we looked at this and we talked about youth mission, and as of yet, we don't have a mission, which we're working on right now. How can you go forward without a mission, one would say? Well, we did, but now we gotta get a mission and move forward in the correct way. The board has been recently poorly attended because of illness, particularly myself. Multiple services provided by several public and private entities lack coordination. That's not really anyone's fault. Each organization has programs. We feel it'd be important, perhaps, as the youth commission could help coordinate those programs. The geographical challenges of serving youth in the tri-state program is unique. We have, children do not see borders. You know, Nebraska, South Dakota, and Iowa is obliterated. So, problems that occur in Iowa are problems that occur in South Dakota, problems occur in South Dakota or in Nebraska. How do you try to meet the needs of those children who really are living in a tri-state area? Future province, future endeavors, we are working on a mission statement, right, Susan?
Yes.
She can really, Susan's been a great person in this commission because she really helped me to task. We think we can work in collaboration with the hospitals, work in collaboration with New Jackson Recovery Services. Mental health needs for juveniles, this is one thing in the last few years just comes to the forefront. And I think nationally, locally, we're beginning to see mental health issues are a serious issue for our society and our county and our city. We try to, we would like to try to work and coordinate with many youth services, work with a collaborative manner with Sulan Mental Health. As we mentioned, we would like to consider replacing the one member, Perla Alcorn Florrie. And then, we recommend restructuring the services at the request of any agency and doing a work redesign. Some of the agencies, some of the organizations that we interviewed no longer exist. But I personally believe, and I think the commission believes, they probably could have continued to exist, but at a smaller presence. And to cease to exist probably is more painful to reduce your services and perform in a smaller dish. Any questions that you might have?
Jackie, any answers you have?
Any answers?
Yes.
No, no, no real answers. I'm the new member on the commission. I will say I, I really grilled them about distribution of money and why they gave it to the Sanford Center. And I will say the commission members were very articulate in expressing that they looked at data-driven research and the results. And I came away with a takeaway very comfortable with how the resources were being spent. Going forward, you know, without a money source and money coming in and being able to generate, it becomes a challenge on what else this commission can do. So, we have spent time trying to, to figure out a focus. And I guess if anybody here has any suggestions, ideas, you know, we batted around the idea that if nothing else, we could bring awareness to issues. that if nothing else, we could bring awareness to issues. We could put people in touch with each other. Those are things that necessarily don't cost money, but may improve service delivery ultimately. No clear decision has been made, but it's kind of a work in progress. So I guess part of the report today would be any feedback or any direction that the rest of you might have for us.
Just to give you a little feedback, since I'm in the report, the Sanford Center, we currently have nine outreach workers in the Sioux City School District. We're in three middle schools, we're in two high schools, we're in two elementary schools. Each one of the outreach workers are required to have at least twenty youngsters on their caseload that they have to document for every single day and present that information to us on a monthly basis so that we know exactly what those outreach workers are doing. We also, when you bring up the question of Dr. McTaggart of mental health issues for our youngsters, we have a very close relationship with the Sulan Mental Health, and they have outreach workers or therapists. And each one of the schools, I don't think, because of dollars, again, those therapists should be in the schools, as far as I'm concerned, basically on an everyday basis, but they're not. But we do what we can. We work with those mental health therapists that come into the Sioux City School Districts on a daily basis. In fact, what we do is we identify those youngsters, along with the staff and also teachers of, in those schools, of those families that really do need that particular help, and we refer them to Sulan Mental Health and their, and their therapists. So we are working from that standpoint at the elementary, middle school and the high school level. Now, what I talk about, we document for twenty youngsters with each one of the outreach workers in the schools that we're in. We not only do that, but we also have a non-caseload student basis on students that we may take information on, on a weekly or a monthly basis that we don't submit to anybody. These are youngsters that are, that we, our outreach workers are called on, on a daily basis to resolve issues with the, with those youngsters, with the parents, by those administrators, by the teachers in the Sioux City School System. So we basically are affecting about 2,500 to more than 3,000 families in this community on an annual basis. One other program that, that is not funded by the county or by the state or by anybody, we have a suspension program. Any youngster that is suspended from the Sioux City School District for any reason, we will take those youngsters at the Sanford Center and continue their education. We normally get, on an average, between 150 to 250 of those youngsters suspended to us on an annual basis, and we reintegrate those youngsters back into the school system. Currently, to date, in our center, we have six youngsters right now suspended to us from the system. And they range from elementary to high school. Today, we have one elementary youngster suspended to us in our, in our school at the Sanford Center today. So that is the kind of work that we are doing along with other agencies. Now, we're not, we collaborate. We can't do everything ourselves, but we are collaborating with other agencies in this community to keep our youngsters in the schools, keep our youngsters out of the judicial system. That's one of the primary things that, that cause our youngsters to drop out and to, and to fail and to, and to not complete their education. Other unique kind of thing that we do, we will follow that youngster from the time that youngster is on our caseload to their entire educational career, from, from elementary to high school and, and beyond that. So we've got a, we've got a success record and we've got documentation to prove that. So that's just a...
You need the documentation.
Well, we've got documentation to prove it.
We didn't mention, maybe Susan could speak to it, also Sanford Center, for the fees that they submit, we sign off on those as well.
Right.
It's, it's really hard when you sit there and, and I happen to be a principal at the time when, when the outreach system began, and I can speak to numerous preventions that are documented by the Sanford Center, but not documented in the community because they never got into the system. So that, that's really a hard thing to measure. And people say, well, maybe it's not necessary anymore. It is because the societal problems continue and continue and continue. You know, I don't know what we would do without some of the agencies like the Sanford Center and other agencies that serve our community. They go above and beyond, and I can tell you that the documentation is phenomenal. You know where they're at, what they've done.
Yeah, it has, it has to be. I mean, there, there's no other way of measuring. We can sit here all day and talk about how good an agency is and what they're doing in the community, but if you're not putting down what you're doing on a daily basis with those youngsters and how you're involving those, those family members of those youngsters, then you never know, really, you know, in black and white, how we are making a difference in a community. And that's what we base, we have based our, our success on from 1993 up to this point. We've got to document so that we know what we're doing and where we're going with these particular youngsters. This information is, is also available to the, to our educators. It's been very, very important for them because sometimes we are the only agency that is documenting the information. And, and there have been occasions where this information has been needed by the district to protect itself or to defend a youngster in whatever setting, in a courtroom situation or whatever. And we've been the only one that's had that documentation over an extended period of time.
Okay, I'd like to add, first of all, I'd like to say, I'm sorry to Mr. Munson, I see there's a typo on first page. We did spell your name right in the top line, the second line. I apologize.
I did the typing.
I also, I can take the blame. Anyway, I would also like to say that it, you know, since the start of the commission, it's been our goal to provide the best quality services for the people involved, that risk youth in Woodbury County, and get the most services for our money. So that's our goal here. And I'd like to thank you for all you've done this year. I don't know if you have any more questions, but I was going to sing you happy holidays before I leave. Hope we're done yet, but, but that's the goal is, we have the same goal as you, is to watch the county money and, and get the biggest bang for our buck, and that's what we're doing. And we've got some awesome programs out there.
Actually, we have some awesome committee members, too.
Yeah, you do.
People see things in eyes that need to see things differently, and that's good.
Motion for Perla.
We do need a motion. I'll make the motion to appoint Perla.
I'm sorry?
I'll make the motion to appoint Perla to the commission. Can I do that?
Yes, I, I think you need the spelling on the name.
It should be in a packet, there's a resume. You can take it off of... But I can show it to him.
I call, morning, get an exact one. It's P E R.
You got it, Pat?
You got it? Okay.
I can show him my iPad.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carries.
God be willing, we'll be back next year to make another report.
God be willing.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your help. Happy holidays, happy holidays. You guys have done a wonderful job this year. Please keep it up. I love you all.
Jesus.
And Dennis, too.
I, I would have joined you in a duet if I...
Oh, no.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Putting down the bells.
Don't leave her out.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah. It comes a place, point, hearing of any individual or group wishing to make a presentation?
I would be reached, but I, one thing I want to make the board aware of, we're having to do some shuffling in our, our bridge program from our special levy. I wasn't here last week to give the report on this. We've just gotten some of our inspection results back this year. Bridge P six, which is on 220th Street, headed south on the Mobile Blacktop, where you turn left to go to Anthem, you turn right, we've got a three-ton bridge there that's been, it's already in our program. We had it in year five. We have about six months of life left on that bridge.
Got to move it up, man.
We are moving it up. We're going to be shuffling that.
Right, you'll pass.
We're going to be shuffling that into our program. Right now, our preliminary estimates make it look like grading the dirt road will be the most cost-effective replacement. When we put that one in, it was either for a bridge replacement or regrading the dirt road. We've done preliminary design now on the dirt road. We're looking about half the cost of a new bridge. The bridge immediately upstream is 240 feet long, so you'd be looking at well over $500,000 for the replacement. But we will be making this shift. It's gonna result in one getting bounced back a little farther when I present the new program to you in the spring. We'll, we'll show that adjustment, but we will need to make an amendment to our five-year program to bring that bridge forward. We've got on a three-month, month reinspection right now. It's basically only open to car traffic to serve that one house back there. But, but it has, this latest inspection did show that those blocks are deteriorating. We tried to get quotes from bridge contractors to come in and do a temporary repair, but what we're afraid of is that when we jack that bridge up, that it's, everything's gonna fall apart. Right now, everything is, it, it's one of those like when you're, when you're pushing on that shower rod and you have that tension.
Right.
When you, when you take some of that load off, it might, it might break out on the ends. You know, right now, the abutments are helping hold everything together out there, and it's never been a good bridge in my time here, and it's, it's gotten a lot worse over the past year.
How old is that bridge? I wonder if it's built?
I think its date is 1900, which means it was built sometime before 1900 and all I can remember.
Oh, my goodness.
This is a bridge that just serves one house. There's no other reason for it to be there. And how much is it going to cost to replace it?
To regrade the dirt road looks like about 200 to 250,000 dollars.
You're talking about, I didn't quite understand. Are you bringing it, going to come in from the east?
We're going to come in from the north on Grundy Avenue, which is currently...
You're not going to do the bridge at all then?
We're going to tear out the bridge. There will not be a bridge there when we're done.
That's the best solution there is.
I, I think so, Larry, because...
And what kind of structure you going to put up? I mean, it's going to...
No structure over the west fork of the Little Sioux. That's what this spans, is the west fork of the Little Sioux.
Right.
It's currently 120-foot truss with two 30-foot approach spans on it. It's the truss itself, what's holding up that truss, that is going bad out of now. It's on some 12 by 12 blocks. I can put my arm through one of the blocks.
Really? So how, how are you going to handle the water flow?
Don't do that.
Pardon me?
How are you going to handle the water flow through the thing then?
Um, once the bridge is out of there, the river can just run.
Okay.
We will tear out the bridge upon completion of the road improvements.
Okay.
And is that going to be done this winter?
No, we'll, we'll shoot for it in the spring. We're, we're kind of pulling out all the stops. We're moving a lot of our project priority work to getting that road designed so that we can have a letting. Right now, we're kind of looking at March for the letting.
Long as the bridge lasts the winter, that's the biggie.
Well, and again, I'll be, I'll be out there about once a month just to check and make sure that none of those caps are breaking. And I'm going to try and get with the property owner, we just got this report last week. I'll be getting with the property owner within the next two weeks, just to give them the news what our plan is so that they're aware of everything going on. There are other people that use the road, but they are the primary beneficiary of the bridge right now.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, it's a good thing we have that money. Otherwise, we'd be looking at this bridge being closed and we wouldn't have the ability to address it.
Forever.
It's one of the good things about having a levy in place.
Is there anyone else who wish to be heard? Is there a motion?
Move we go into executive session under code 21.5, parent one, parent C. Second.
Call or roll?
Munson, class.
Aye.
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 Terrorists, hands, something around here, so after meeting...
They're gonna...
They're on the agenda.
They're on the agenda.